So that is in the financial study that they do for that. They meet with Rick and Jeff and myself and we forecast out five years what we want to do. Can we do it all? But we do have that plan and that is revisited every time they do a rate spec.
What we're trying to do is put back in our infrastructure so we don't get behind the eight ball like we was.
Yes, and that's basically that.
But you still are.
Yes, and if you look on here, it's just saying we have to have 125 percent minimum of our bond coverage percentage for, to be able to take and borrow money. And all of our bondholders want to see that figure. They can get copies of our financials anytime they want to. So on the water side we're okay. Sewer side's below what they should be and forecasting it will be right on the level for 2012 and 2013. If we continue with the rates rating increase at 5 percent.
What percentage is going towards new stuff and new improvements or replacements? What percentage is going towards current?
Just regular expenses?
Well, what I'm trying to gauge is we do have a lot of old infrastructure being replaced. So how much do we determine what percentage of that goes over the infrastructure compared to new?
If you look at, they build, you're looking for a phase in the back.
Yeah.
That is my capital improvement plan, fourth phase phase in the back.
We have a much larger rate, water rate in most cities and due to this, it hurts us to give them any grants. They look at that and...
Send down that road.
Yes, absolutely. Except though, they say you don't need it.
They think they need the money, raise your loss.
Yes.
So, to answer, here's what, we're not going to be able to do all that.
Because basically, you look at the first phase, after we pay our normal expenses, after we pay our loans, in 2011, I'm going to have a sewer of $129,500 left over. That's it. That has no capital improvements. That's just to pay all the bills. That's all I've got left over. In 2012, over, he says I might have $225,000 left, I didn't prioritize them. That's it.
That's if the rates were raised.
That's why I have to pay, that's why I did the spin on capital improvement.
Is it because the improvements made to the sewage plant, the water plant was done because of Honda and you aren't seeing the benefits of that yet because that goes back into a payment?
We're seeing the benefits from Honda. I think the biggest thing that hurt us was Delta.
The revenue would more miss.
Yeah. Our revenue was based on where we were at that point in time. When Delta left, Delta used as much water as what Honda's did. And that was a big revenue stream that went out real quick. So now you're taking that out and place.
Absolutely. And as far as percentages go, I don't really know how to answer that one.
I can, I mean, you're looking at probably 20 percent of new and 80 percent of putting back into your existing infrastructure. We have to.
See, in these rates or these numbers, is spending on preventive maintenance and your depreciation. All this is included in this. It's not like this already going to have, but we've already spent money to maintain and depreciate the purchase number.
Well, I don't know if it's all on preventative maintenance, a lot of it, you know, I don't know how much of that 80 percent you're talking about on the old infrastructure is actually emergencies or, you know, a line break or things like that.
Well, you take, you take... A year ago, I wasn't even looking at West Main Street. Well, last winter, we had three broken mains in one night. We would start backfilling and it'd pop up the road fifty, but we'd get it fixed, start backfilling, pop up the road fifty. But in the meantime, we got all the factories on West Main Street and all, and hey, we have no water for production, are you going to fix this? So that took $115,000 of my capital improvement money, then I'm going to have to focus on West Main Street now. I mean, it just changed that quick overnight.
We're trying to do that till next year.
I'm trying to, I'll be paying overtime this winter, but yes, I'm trying to hold off till next year.
So we have a little more revenue?
Correct.
With this report and at the end of that report, as they spoke, I requested them to give a quote from the, for, be able to do our financials that are here. And they did get that back to me and it's $4,900. It's in here as well. Yeah, $4,500 each utility.
For sewage.
I like that.
I recommend that they get that. And that way they give us our figures, they know how it's going and we need to be proactive and make it's a business, a darn big business. And it helps us keep them, keep them track and it'll be a lot easier to be able to...
As it stands right now, out of that number that you see, that $137,000 we've already spent, 60,000 this year of that money. So technically, I don't have the money to do West Main Street this year. That's, that's a big reason we've got to put it off till next year also.
How big of a service line are you going to put down?
It's more replacing the main, it's the eight inch that runs down West Main Street. You remember about eight or nine years ago, I had that replaced from the railroad tracks heading west all the way out to Delta because of the same situation we're running into now.
And we have to move the other direction, the railroad tracks, I don't, railroad tracks back this way.
Correct.
Anything else for utilities? Thank you.
Oh, I did want to mention too, I didn't know how the city's salary was, I took out Stephen Hamilton, I have more budget this year.
That's what I hear.
On the, paying for the half the salary.
He has been put into the city side.
The whole, the total is on the, on the city side now?
That's what I'm asking you, I think.
I don't know. I haven't seen the city's.
That was never really, to me, the salary was, it was...
Okay.
What happened?
Just think, you know, a pass first reading, if it's supposed to be in there, yes, if not, I'm requesting it not be because it does not really...
The salary or the, what's left is last year where $200 inspection and split city utilities. No one told me the difference.
Donna, you know, he does as much for utilities as what Kathy does though. Her and Kathy, him and Kathy are doing the same thing.
He's not expecting any of the utility lines or anything because Jeff, we have our own inside.
More to Kathy.
Okay. I can put it back here now, I was just saying because we discussed doing that and didn't know if it was specifically that or not.
It had been brought up a long time with the number eight. That's what you were asking me to go because it's had been increased here for the...
For Kathy from the VDA?
Yes, on the inspection.
The inspection with the split and...
The part-time inspector?
Uh, in line 112.
That is Stephen Hamilton, isn't it? Part-time inspector.
Yes.
How much did you show last year?
It was $20 per inspection, we paid half. Utilities, they have four points on that. We don't put line names in.
Well, we have to look at this in front of the next meeting.
That year approved was $8,500.
That was city and...
Okay.
Exactly. There's $8,500.
So that case are going to be $20,000 for you this year, part-time. So $8,500 for you last year and $8,500 for the city.
I don't know what we spent on paying, I'm just looking at...
We only spent about $2,000 on that.
We would have spent as much as you guys have been.
Right. We only spent about $2,000 so figuring it forward for the year, for the year. I, I think we go back to line item 112, cut back to the $8,500.
I don't know, he's got a memory.
Well, what I'm saying is, the utilities paid half last year and the city paid half. So was it $8,500 last year for city and $8,500 for utilities?
That's what we budgeted.
Seventeen thousand, we spent how much? Where do?
What I'm saying though is so far this year, we spent two thou, the city spent $2,000.
$2,000 utilities.
Utilities has spent $2,000.
So that's more than...
You could have cut out utilities completely.
That's my question.
Oh, I wasn't doing that, I mean, I was cutting city portion of it down.
So to go the whole year, be $4,000 for city, $4,000 for utilities?
Right.
Eight thousand total.
But I can see what Donna's saying, she, he doesn't really do anything for utilities per se. He does building inspections.
Right.
And bill is the same thing though, I said with Kathy. Kathy doesn't inspect anything from utilities either. What she does is promote building and development with her services and with the inspector's services. That's why they have paid half because you benefit from utilities on the places that are built, right?
So, so I don't think we changed it.
You don't need that much though, do you?
No, I think, I say the cities, I don't think we change how it's paid, but I think you change the cities portion from, act at least $8,500. And I think we, you know, where it was last year, I don't think we did that.
Take out that $15,000.
If the utilities want to keep theirs in.
I, I think they should.
Right now, the way it's going, it'd be four and four for the whole year.
Well, but that's, that's, that's just based on this year, next year, hopefully next year goes up, hopefully we have more growth, hopefully we add, talk things right in, huh?
And Donna, we have reduced the cost to utilities quite a bit.
Oh, absolutely. I'm not complaining.
By Lynn, taking Linda and Gary's.
So we're good. So I say we reduce that, that, move it back to $8,500?
Let's make it $8,000.
Okay.
Go on, watch.
I like, hey, I like...
Now, if, if business does pick up next year, hopefully it will, be an optimist, then the $8,000 may not be, well...
That's double what we're projecting.
Okay, $8,000 for city, $8,000 for...
Right, and that's still double what we...
That's, yeah.
So they line 112 on 010.
112.
Line 112 under, under section one.
Yeah, oh, my gosh. Okay. I got, I already got that.
Sorry.
Okay, but I do it then.
I'll need, I'll just try and change the view.
Okay, alright.
There's that point one there, now we only have to do another one. How much, how much did we spend on part-time inspectors in the last two years? Each year?
Well, that's why, I just...
She brought back a $2,000, $10,000, that may be, that might be. I mean, because this year, we cut it down a little less. I think that's 70 cents for that.
I mean, if we spent less than $5,000 or $2,000, we kind of spent, you know, maybe $4,000 this year, maybe, maybe we cut it to five or something.
Okay. Okay.
The next one here, the line would be, please. Stacy?
Step right up. I'm going to come to the day. I'm sorry Stacy, I'm going to apologize before we already started. Please don't, I need to move.
Do you have a card in the city in here?
Yes.
I bet she does.
I bet she does.
I'll give you the, the ring over here, $35.
That's a decent trade, that's a fair trade.
Now wait a minute, I said that before, she said, no, I won't keep it.
I want to keep.
But the $3,500 will get you this. That's, that's a nice gesture.
That's what they were going to give you for trading.
So what kind of shape to them? Maybe last million or two years? Yeah, miles long. I'm liking that. That's a good idea. That's sort of what, that's sort of what he was asking for already. If that's all they're going to give you for a trade, which is not in bad shape.
But hell, I've been down this road, she wants to keep it for different reasons.
But she just says she knows. Emergencies came up, a lot of use needs saving. Right, so, and then...
What they drive around is worthless on the streets at that time, it's all nice.
But what was mentioned was that they needed it for emergencies with the street department, we let them use it, so I'm, I'm assuming the same police department, you know?
With the police department, yeah.
Should never have cut. It's an awesome idea.
Yeah, when we take it off.
There you go. It would be city, a city hall, it would be...
Just like that, ours sits here.
When you left at five o'clock or whatever time, I think it's awesome. I do too. You want to go back to that line item and cut that out?
I think we'd have that out. You can still leave the vehicle maintenance fee in there, you can still leave the fuel in there, you have $2,000 to empty, but then you can take the $25,000 off.
$25,000 on, yeah.
Good idea Jamie.
Stacy, you were awesome. Awesome. Do you have anything else to say?
I'd like a sandwich.
I should have put on that, but that $25,000.
No, it's not, we have to pay, we have to pay $3,500. We have to pay $3,500 to get it though.
That's a heck of a lot better than paying $7,000.
So don't take off, don't take off $25,000.
No, that's what they were going to give us on the trade in, right?
Right.
I'm sorry. That's what it's worth, right? Stop and go through your budget, yes. Bargaining chip here.
Okay. Please.
How's that work?
We haven't, we haven't done anything yet.
How does it work? How do we, I mean, how do you pay yourself really in that case? For $3,500 for that? You, you move salaries from, you move funds from one department to the other.
Resolutions.
Yeah, resolutions. We've done before.
I mean, I just want, just where it's going to go. Actually, I put it in, what, your vehicle fund or whatever?
Jamie, that's a safe, just like...
Alright, so instead $25,000, $21,500 or something.
So is that what you're going to do, is cut that whole?
Cut it down or leave, $3,500.
Just leave $3,500.
Now, are you sure that Stacy wants to do that because her and I went through this once and she said, no, she don't want to.
But you said you want to use it on an occasional basis, right? It wouldn't be used every day here.
And when we left here at night...
You can see that if you're not...
Now, the, the only question I have is what's she going to use it for? Because what she was going to use it for, we don't want Gary driving it if they're going to use it for the, you know, I mean, it kind of stays hidden.
It's going to be horrible if we use it for...
Investigation.
Maybe you just don't label it all over it and then give it up.
Well, we have a lot of like, vehicles that aren't labeled right now, so...
Are you alright with that?
Alright.
Are you alright with that? Are you alright with that? We're planning to hold your pick.
Reserve the right? And allow it or...
Reserve the right to wait until after they're done with your budget?
Wait until you guys get done with this.
No, no, I think we need to decide, we have to start before. That was a very important criteria, we had to go ahead of time.
That's like we sold insurance or previous life.
I was thinking we need to do it right away, you know, before we ever get into the blood match. Blood.
Okay, that's, that's, that's an option for us to be thinking about now, let's start with Stacy's.
Okay.
Okay, no, we're not doing anything over there.
Not official.
Okay, that's something that we're going to think about.
That's a new gift.
Okay, sure.
Where do you have officers, Stacy, you haven't had yet?
I'm sorry.
How many do you have to lost?
19.
19.
Well, it'll be 19 when you got it.
There's been 20 through the budget.
That includes her?
Yes.
That's really close.
Did you have one just leave that to him go?
My crew.
Crew? I think he left.
Exos.
So you're going, you want 20, counting you? And if we fill both of those positions, are we going to 21? How many 20?
Three.
You have 18 now, is what you're saying, count you. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
18.
Counting you, right now.
Yeah.
So how many do you think we're going to hire this year? Just one, two? How much is their clothing?
One, 18 clothing.
No, no, we're looking at just 2011 though, right? They're going to need, I'm looking at new officer clothing. We've got it down from 3,000 from last year, but last year we hired several people, didn't we? This year, we're not hiring, what, one, we said maybe two?
Two, we said.
Or those may be in 2011 though, right? And so have we, are we looking to add officers in 2012? Probably maintain, nothing new.
Maintain for the budget improvement last year.
So new officer clothing, we're looking at, you know, maybe one or two, maybe as an exchange or something. What's it cost outfit for new officer clothing? What's that for the office?
That new officer clothing is, I don't know why they put that on there, because it's a new officer equipped, and we're having an office. It's not just the...
Right, so, so what is that maybe, I want to ask.
Well, it's a property, $5,000, that's the whole thing for everything. Because we have to give, plus class three, three class Bs, and then all the...
Then after that, how, then they pay them?
They, they call them, you know, they pay all of them off a year, they make themselves.
So you're going to need a full 12,000 for two officers for the year 2012, even though it's carrying over to it? Going to need a full 12?
I don't know, completely didn't mention that.
No, 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 I'm not talking about...
If we go to 10.
Right. That would be enough for two and...
I could probably go to 10.
Which one do you want?
New officer clothing.
128.
128. So that's a count of 2,000. And are we hiring any probation officers in testing? Are we going to have any probationary officers in 2012? Plan on that?
We have a plan, but if I get, if someone leaves, I get a new officer that doesn't have anything, they're going to, they're going to test me and they send us a letter saying that we're going to raise the, increase the cost by 3 percent, 3.1 percent.
See, if you're allowed to time officer quits and what you save on their salaries can pay for the testations, if you're allowed to do that.
Sometimes it depends on longevity and, you know, sometimes that sort of thing, I need some other...
So you're saying that then if they're hired, if new policeman replaces the one that quit before their longevity vacation time holiday cost is paid up, then you will be out.
So you, so you may not have, whatever maybe you can afford now, whatever maybe you might not have, but that can be paid out.
What about the part-time dispatch?
Part-time dispatchers, I increased to $15 an hour instead of to $13.5. What I did was I took the lowest paid full-time dispatcher and she ran it $15. And the reason I did that is because the part-time dispatchers have to go through the exact same train as full-time dispatchers.
It's certainly one of those gorgeous bench as a full-time person.
Yeah, Abby works like 35 hours, sometimes 40, sometimes 50 hourly, and she's doing the exact same thing as a full-time dispatcher. She has to hold the same certification, the same train, and re-certify the same as full-time. And we have, you know, I think part of ours is paid for the 112, so we have the same full-time dispatcher.
So explain this to me, you have $38,000 budget right now, so far this year, you've only spent $2,357. How, how does that work? If that's occasion...
Well, we're short one right now, where we're supposed to have two and we have one right now, because I can't give you back any.
You said $2,300?
Mm-hmm.
Double it to your part-time, right?
Yeah.
And then you double it after the year, you're at $10,000.
Okay.
So you had an increase here at about 12,000.
So you're still way more than you need.
Under that W8.
I'm trying to take away, I'm just trying to make things as reasonable as I can through true numbers.
Right. Well, I DAX 4 meter and 911 4 meter, those salaries, those increases involved, they're always supposed to be $1,150.
Where, what time is that?
And somehow I got $2,110.
Where are ours?
I DAX 4 meter and 911 4 meter.
362.
No, this is actually all...
You're all under 116, so under overtime?
That's correct.
I DAX 4 meter and 911 4 meter should be $1,150.
Oh, it's not on there, are she here?
It's, it's on the, the form one, the big line item.
They're correct, they are correct, I did not expose. I think I copied and pasted down for my equation that we had driving up.
Yeah.
I probably believe.
Yeah.
Let me help you now.
Your dollar sign looks like a one.
A one.
I thought about mine, not mine.
The part-time dispatch, go back to that, so can we just lay that at 38?
They are correct on salary. But can I, can I raise it to $15?
I, I'm saying there's room, still based on what you spent.
I just want to raise it to $15.
You're wanting to raise it from how much 13?
13, 15, 13, 25.
To $15 for a part-time person?
Right.
There you go, do you pay every part-time person that they...
No, you're paying them because they have certification. They do the job, they have anything that's...
And I agree with that, but I'm talking about, not people who don't have certifications, right? Do you have people who don't have certifications?
All of our, all of our dispatchers have to have them, so I don't have anybody that doesn't have them. They can't go in the room without having all the certifications.
I say we give it to her, she gives us the $3,500.
Oh, man.
I think they have to be certified like that, do the same job as full-time person then we can hire.
That's why we can't, that's why we can't get the second part-time person.
Do you think money's going to make the difference where you can get it?
I don't know. It's worth a try.
I think we can allow her to do it, rate, we can still drop that to 38,000 and save that, that 52,000.
Part-time?
Right. In tradition, you have $3,500, you have to be...
38,000.
I think it's a bargaining chip. We're going to leave it at 38.
You're taking part-time dispatch.
And take off the 52,000.
32,000.
That'd be, right, right, I think that's, we make $5,000. Right, right, I think that's, we make five thousand dollars.
I'll, I'll please you.
Okay. Based on, based on the calculations of last year, you're not, if you're gonna pay your dispatcher fifteen dollars an hour, chances are you're not gonna handle that.
We actually have not, just, so there's no...
Two, you have two part-time?
But the raise would be fifteen, but right now it's fifteen seven five an hour. That's, that's for two thousand and eleven.
How many part-time dispatchers you got, two?
I should have two, I only have one.
Okay, so what's two of? Well, we doubled it, I doubled it, and then...
We're still okay.
More than a single dispatcher.
We're still okay, we're okay, all right. Okay, next.
And then I added a quarter, which is nowhere near what you're... And we weren't even at half, we're gonna give thirty-eight.
I don't understand that.
Well, I think she's gonna give us a vehicle.
I'm still unclear on the... Stacy, I'm still unclear on the, you spent twenty-three hundred dollars on the part-time dispatcher so far this year? And we're looking at thirty-eight thousand a day. So you've had one dispatcher this year?
She's supposed to have two, she's only had one.
So you want to spend twenty-three hundred and...
That's all we're figuring, if you double that, and then double that for a year. So you're spending four, five hundred.
Ten thousand.
On Abby by herself. Well, she also has the, um, the nine-one-one fund, and you pull, I'd have to look, because the...
So that's all the cities paying?
Previous, previous.
That's what I wanted, that somewhere else, because...
Well, the nine-one-one's paying for some of it too.
Okay, that, and that makes sense. Because basically, you won't, you won't be spending less than five thousand dollars for a year, or five thousand dollars for a year.
Right, and then double that for two of them, that's then, and then a raise factor, because she's wanting to raise it, so that's why I said twelve five. So we could drop it to twenty, and there's still enough, you, you still almost doubled it for, for two people.
Well, yeah, and then some.
But you don't know what you're gonna get from the nine-one-one, so that's maybe the way you leave it, they leave it at thirty-eight.
Leave it there and see.
We are... Is there an agreement or contract or... Nine-one-one is supposed to pay the supervisor, dispatch supervisor salary.
Right. What their dispatch supervisor make, we get, we're supposed to get that in the line of the year. And that goes into a separate fund.
Right. So I think that's... And I don't know if that's a, a contract or...
The only thing I, the only thing I disagree about, part-time and full-time, you have the same wage. I understand they have to have the same capabilities, but maybe we can pay them towards our capabilities and make that a separate pay. Like, uh, like we do at the fire department, where if you have this, whatever you get. Yeah, or something. Because...
Come across the table again, so.
You mean like the certification pays is what you're talking about?
Or something, I mean, because...
They can't, they can't work if they're not certified.
I, I understand that, I don't, I'm not arguing that. I'm just arguing about the part-time, I'm giving them the same pay.
Well, a lot of these people are part-time, because they have a full-time dispatch job. At least one case, is there more than that?
Just one.
Just one. Dispatches with sheriff's department, and she works part-time in the city. So it is a part-time job, it's not like we're cutting them short, we don't expect benefits from two voices.
It's just, it looks odd that, that a part-time would get paid the same rate of pay.
But they're not, but they're not, they're not getting it.
They're not getting the insurance and all that, I understand that. Six hundred dollars an hour. Obvious, so...
Yeah, benefits.
I think we'll leave it at thirty-eight.
Yeah, we're not to thirty-eight.
And we remove the thirty-five hundred dollar, oh, that was, that was the reason.
Is that it?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what we were talking about.
Are we talking about the part-time dispatch?
Yes.
I thought it was down to twenty.
No, it's thirty-eight.
Why is it thirty-eight?
It's been thirty-eight, you've been sleeping.
That's what it was last year. Because we don't know what nine-one-one's gonna do to her yet, and we need a vehicle for wearing her. So, yeah.
Well, we know what nine-one-one's gonna do this year, we don't know about next year.
Right, well, that's why, and that's what we're quite asking.
That's why we're doing next year, yes, so that's why we're doing it.
Okay, so I take the twenty-three hundred, multiply it by two, that's five thousand, multiply by two again.
No, 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 what you're, what you're missing is nine-one-one's paying for some of that. We don't know what that's gonna be for next year, is what we're saying. So we're just gonna leave it at thirty-eight, and that will recover if it's...
I want to say usually, there's one or two dispatchers that are paid out, and then part-time dispatchers that are paid out of the nine-one-one fund. And I think Abby might be included in that. I'd have to actually go look at her master plan, but I can, I mean, I can let you know.
I know, like, in this month, that, that, I was a pretty impressive, I gave us the dispatch supervisors pay.
And that, right, yes. But we don't necessarily have to pay, our dispatch supervisor, that's always gone into the nine-one-one fund. And you guys use that. And all their overtime comes out of that. All the, uh, dispatch overtime comes out of that fund as well. And any time, those sorts of things, but it has to be used for dispatch money. That's part of the agreement.
Okay, we're on, we're moving on. Building maintenance. Last year it was twenty-five hundred, and we're requesting twenty thousand. Why the increase?
I moved, um... Four hundred from A R A B. Twenty-five hundred from, um... Four hundred from A R A B. The generator services.
So are you just combining them all in the book?
Yeah, it's all under...
I'm sure it moves in separate items on this page, so...
A R A B is, yes, she took...
It was mentioned from two thousand and eleven.
Eleven.
And there's nothing in it for twelve.
What, what's now?
She's moved down to increase.
Yeah, the A R A B, building maintenance.
Heating and air service.
Heating and air service.
Fire alarm service.
Fire alarm service. Five hundred for O C H. Fifteen hundred for service and maintenance agreement, I moved into, um, building maintenance.
Anything to...
That's the actual increase for building maintenance is, um, eleven thousand, it's two fifteen. And the only reason I'm doing that is because the building is getting older, and it has never been painted on the inside, never had carpet, nothing like that. And, and, um, we were told that that was, that kind of stuff is too expensive to come out of some of them. So I've got a budget for that now.
I know, but there's a nice, nice money, what, there's bullshit amount to it.
Five hundred dollars.
No, I mean, what, I know what A D A is.
O C H compliance for five hundred dollars is pretty good a year.
But, but what's it for?
We have to make in our M S D S sheets and, um...
Well, that's just... Hanging them on the wall.
As it is, um, materials that we have in the building. I have to properly store those. Which I just had to get John to do, Twilight Kevin, because this is all corroded from, uh, chemicals. Maybe sort of there.
Get rid of that Kevin, put in proper containment there. Do we have a subscription to M S D S, um, for, sorry, C C I F?
Yes, and you finally got, I mean, you got, maybe get a hundred or less, or...
Less.
Or less. Cleanings, supplies, things like that.
Plant supply, anything for a lab, but, I mean, I think it's not for proper...
Stacy, part of your building maintenance, part of them come out of the, uh, C C I F, but you're talking, I think he was talking, twenty-something thousand.
Eleven thousand for carpet and five hundred. Thousand for carpet. Yeah. And twelve for...
And a paint, there's not enough for all of it. But some other could come, I was, I'd say there's twenty thousand, half of it could come from C C I F.
Could even end these other items that were on here, back, like twelve thousand five hundred or something in it, or... Well, I took the four hundred from A R A B, three thousand from U N A R, um, six thousand from the fire alarm service. And those together, plus what you had this year.
Seven hundred for serving as a pre-mission. Only that I moved over was twenty-four.
Twenty-five hundred, I got four hundred. Let's say three thousand, seven thousand, five hundred, so... I'm looking at seven thousand four hundred. From last year. The car alarm service. Heating and air service. And maybe the maintenance unit always twenty-five hundred. You guys, hey, I'm trying to... So then, we've got to turn my page, I'm sorry, I gotta turn my page.
Hey, I heard you were wet.
So we can, we can bring that down.
And it takes a lot of money for this building alone, just for... The heating and air conditioning, all that.
No, we got, mm.
That's expensive.
So, of this building, yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
But these are meeting the mayor.
So there's ten thousand. What's that? We're gonna do ten thousand of building maintenance, and we can do two, so that comes out of C C I F. And she said, yeah. So is that, that'll pay for her the... Miss, was that the C C I F fund that would pay for her to do the maintenance of the building?
Well, they can't, it can't do all of it, so, but you can do, you can do ten thousand, see, I put forty thousand a year in. It takes a lot of money for allowing that, when they come in here, to do the heating and air conditioning and whatever else is possibly fixed. But you could, I know they could call... You have any monthly shooting, but whoever's in next year, but they can call ten thousand to C C I F to help out the heat station.
So we could drop the only maintenance to ten thousand?
Mm-hmm.
And then that leaves ten thousand left there. But you're still gonna be able to...
So... For twelve, we're... Plus this, ten thousand.
So that's seventy-five hundred extra.
Now you're gonna have to make a note, Stacy, because whoever's here in my place, you're gonna have to, between you and Devon, you're meant to let them know what I'm talking about. I mean, I'll hang around, but they may not want them.
Where are your services here?
Whatever.
Because that computer service agreement is our, we have Josh, and, uh, I don't, I'm not gonna have another twenty in twenty-eleven, so... Forty-five hundred, I'm gonna have thirty-five hundred dollars to do.
Didn't you take two thousand off of, when it went to the officer?
Yeah.
Is it not, right?
Yeah, I moved that into the, into that, not Josh.
What they're looking, what they're looking at here doesn't show the breakdown.
That's all right. Well, but...
I just didn't know the date, I was gonna do that with Josh.
Well, you're saying that shouldn't do that, yeah, can you...
I moved from two thousand dollars. She's moving up two thousand dollars into Josh's line item, but he does that work, and then the officer next year won't.
Uh-uh.
Yeah, then the officer next year won't get that money.
Like in two thousand and eleven, I did four hundred thousand dollars.
To Josh.
Okay. Josh, do you have a last, does he have a free T C?
Oh, that over here is a little bit too bad.
Okay. Does he own size, or does he do a free T C?
He doesn't, we have, we have, we have a contract.
What's his agreement then, I mean, it's far as twenty-five right here, or do you just send it, uh, hourly?
It's hourly.
So what is that, computer service?
Is that staying the same, or what is that?
Well, basically that, on the other side, that one-one-one account, saw a decrease in two thousand for computers.
For I T, for I T.
And that went into...
Computer services.
The three-six-six, which is where you see the increase of two thousand dollars, so basically the wash is over.
The salary increases, what, what are they based on, is he...
Well, and that's, the mayor called me and asked me on that, that looks kind of funny, because for the whole officers, it only went up eleven hundred dollars.
Well, but that went up thirty-one hundred dollars if you talk about the two thousand, which...
Right. Uh, well, actually, no, it would've been, would've had a decrease there.
Well, you took, you took two thousand out of it, so if you left that in there, it would've actually went up thirty dollars.
Oh, I see, interesting. The reason that it's not a big increase, as you can see, for twenty, um, officers, is because last year we had eighteen officers, an assistant chief, and a police chief budget. This year we have nineteen officers at a police chief budget. For the nineteenth person, your, um, assistant chief, the salary needs a lot larger than what that officer would be, the nineteenth officer would be. So that's why there's not much of an increase there, you're actually saving money.
I understand.
Oh, that's right.
That's why I didn't want to touch it.
That would be the other sheet that I'm giving out, um, I instructed a one point five percent increase plus longevity to the here for the police department.
Now that, did you figure that for everybody, or just, so everybody's based on one point five percent?
Um, all non-incent employees are based on one point five percent.
What's that? So Stacy, the training house computer... Is, was, the guy that was doing the computer work before, right? That's what you're paying him in years, like, to do the working house.
Word psychology.
That, I mean, even though it shows the line item, it's gonna, is supposed to be going to the computer service agreement?
Five hundred and three dollars. Kind of rounded up to the nearest, but five hundred and three dollars. The only thing that's gonna go to the computer service agreement is the two thousand for the I T one arm here.
Because I don't see the I T program.
And that moves around thirty-five hundred. I might be going back to when I passed computer service agreement.
Okay, so, if, then why do you have money set aside for the house computer?
Because I wanna, I wanna go back to K and K, because we haven't gotten updates for three and a half years.
From...
Because we won't, we didn't pay that.
Wow.
We didn't pay it, so we have to have the updates for three and a half years, so I'm trying to keep, trying to get them back. They basically got this back, so it's agreed. You know, we, we stopped paying them, so then they said...
They stopped giving them.
They stopped giving us the updates, so I'm trying to get them back a little more, so that we can get the updates, and that could be a maintenance agreement with them.
Do you want to check on us?
I have no idea. I don't know then, because, like I said, it's been three and a half years since we negotiated and paid them, and it's been three and a half years since we paid them, so, you know, I don't know. I'm guessing, I'm guessing.
Trying to get them back, we may have paid.
Yeah, and, and that's...
So that pays.
So I wanted to get in the process with them and try and get back so I can get all those updates, since it was a messy one.
I was, wait a minute, so equipment repairs is up four thousand dollars.
Now where are you doing it?
Where are you at? Two thirty-one.
Oh, you're back on the other side, okay.
Phase three, yeah, I'm just trying to figure out.
Okay.
Price of oil, probably, I moved all up the tires, you know? Your car's tires is probably way up there now.
Yeah, I only have, under equipment repairs, I only have thirty-eight percent left in the budget for this year.
It's been eleven three six.
Yeah.
What else is that?
What else, who's that?
Uh, we've had to replace, uh, brakes.
That's just on the bill.
Oh, yeah, that's all.
Okay.
You know what helps that equipment repair? Is if you, you move that thirty-five hundred dollar vehicle to somebody else's front end, you get rid of those. We already figured that one out, I'm gonna ask one, I thought you said you were still thinking about it.
The maintenance on that. Just drop it for now, we've got it questionable, so let's just move on, Jamie.
Have we, have we sustained a bid for next year on gas yet?
And I, I just raised that two thousand, just, um, made at least the price we, I don't know if we have.
I don't know, everybody, we do it in my December.
So what, what are you doing with the N star laptops? So what, what are you doing with the A and car laptops?
Uh, the A and car laptops I do to computer equipment fund, and, uh, I still wanna get those.
So you're gonna continue on the same path as what would've been approved before, the five thousand here?
Yes, I wanna, I wanna, uh, actually, Josh and I have been sitting down, trying to spec out what we want on the laptops. And then, we kinda have a figure of what each one...
How many do you have so far?
Zero.
So why nine is this?
Those are the heavy duty.
Yeah, we did, because remember we had, let's just say the sheriff's department coming to work with this.
Yeah, Brian brought Derek.
So many, yeah, like, that was five or six years, are you kidding?
The A and car laptops were, um, are, yeah, for five thousand dollars, but the year before, I, was it in September last year, that it was cut? Because it was at like ten thousand or twelve thousand, and it was cut down to five thousand.
How much do one of those cost?
Right now, the one we're looking at, just with the A and air permission we have on them, is thirty-five hundred.
So that's like one computer.
Plus, plus the, yeah, plus the brackets, right.
Yeah, that's the bracket laptop.
He was looking to lease.
There was five thousand, one in two thousand.
We got to talking about the leasing, we went away from it, I think, because it was, it was like six thousand dollars a year for, like, four or five of them or something, I think it was.
Yeah, plus the fact that, I mean, what we were looking at is if you, if we tried to do it in phases, like by five at a time, we're gonna, by the time you get to the twenty, we're gonna do it first by one day. So we were gonna try to finance, but, um, we don't have a spec deadline, Josh and I don't, uh, to find out what kind of financial, so that's kind of all for you. Cause Brian's thought was to buy like four or five at a time.
Yeah, he was five.
But, but, um, our thought is, by the end of the twenties, first time we're gonna be, we replaced. So we were gonna try to finance everything, and make it out, I mean, period of, um, uh, and buy it.